Pretty ambitious plan for the, you know, the year ahead and even those following years.
That was my question, just about the urgency of some of, you know, these things that you list out. Because the capital project is not just happening next year, right? We're talking, you know, years going on and same with the transition to EV. So if we choose to not address the gym floor and the auditorium things and the LED lighting's lighting next year, will we want to make that same argument in the following years to come? Like it's just too much, like too many other things happening. You know, like to what extent should, are we kind of missing out by not doing it now before the shovels hit? You know, before we get too deep in the capital project? Is this the time to do this?
Uh, I, I, I would say this, these are important projects, but I think if you waited one or two years, that would be okay. So let's take, Tom and I spoke a lot about the gymnasium. Typically you get 10 to 12 years out of a gymnasium floor and then it's really good practice to refinish it. I believe ours was done about, just about 10 years ago. So you're, you're getting to that point.
Less than that, I think, right? I was at, because it was, it was my, I think it was either my first or second year on the board.
It was 20, I believe it was the summer of 2015.
It was the summer of, maybe that was, it was my very first year on the board. So the first thing I saw, yeah.
And there's one or two areas that need to be addressed, but we could do that internally. You could definitely get a few more years out of it. Now it doesn't have the updated branding, you know, the paint, it definitely needs painting. So it would be a very good thing to do, but I don't think it's critical. That's just my judgment, but, but really this is for the board to decide. LED lighting, uh, it'll, it'll improve, even in this room. You have fluorescent lights, you know, the quality of, of, you know, for students and teachers. It would be an improvement, you know, so it is a really good thing to do. But I will also say this, potentially, if on April 1st, if either pre-K funding goes up or foundation aid goes up, we could end up with about an additional 100,000. And then we may come back to the board in our April presentation and say, let's, let's add one of these projects. You know, I, I, and I say that, you know, I hesitate a little bit because already you have a long list of, of, of projects and it will be very taxing on, on, you have a small admin team. But, you know, they're all very dedicated and, and very motivated and they know this benefits students and the community. So, um, I know, maybe that's not, not a real firm answer. I, I, I think it's up to the board at, at this point. If, if you'd like to, you know, add some extra projects or potentially wait for, to see if we get additional state funding and then maybe revisit this list, we really, you know, we'll, we'll take items from the board on this.
I guess I want to speak at this point because it's like, this is like, the board definitely gets to set the priorities for what it wants to see happen at the district level. But like these kinds of situations, I think are this really important, but, but nuanced interaction between the board and an administration. Because the board has, has very good and well-informed reasons for what it's thinking about and what it's asking for. But I'm going to say something that I don't think Carl and Catherine are saying for themselves. And I'm saying based on, you know, 10 years on the board and 10 years, you know, working closely with the superintendent and the administrative team is that the administrative team thinks, that thinks very carefully about the budgets that they proposed, you know, proposed to the board. So all of these are really good questions, right? Like we ask questions and it gives ourselves opportunities to really inform ourselves, get the information that we need and inform the public about these different ways to go. But I do, I am going to take it upon myself at this point to just remind ourselves, you know, as a board. And I don't think, we doubt this, but I, I am going to say it out loud, that we have a great deal of, of, of faith and appreciation in our administrative team. And, you know, they, they are proposing the budget that for just this year, right? Not that this is something, not that, that for just this year, under these particular circumstances, that this was the budget that they did decide to recommend last, last week. And, um, and I, and also just really acknowledging the level of concern that I think is really a legitimate one about wanting to make sure that we adequately fund our public schools well, that we aren't, um, that we don't go down a path necessarily of really looking for cost cutting when it comes to our public schools because we're so, we're so invested in them and we want them to be well-informed. So anyway, those were just a couple of things that I, um, wanted to say at this point. But all of these questions are really important and it's important that we're bringing them up because it's a, it's a big responsibility for us to have and we want ourselves to understand and we want the public to understand whatever decision we decide to make.
And I appreciate you saying that it's a decision for this year and all the work that went into planning the budget for this year. But I think I want to know for sure, you know, in terms of long-term planning, you know, when you, when you don't get that, when you don't go to the tax cap one year, you know, as we were talking about at the last meeting, we, so we don't have that base, you know, of a 132,000, then the base is lower for next year. So.
Has a good thought about that, which I think she might be able to. See, it's a really important point that we want to make clear.
Yeah, because we have a fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers, of course. I have no interest in gouging taxpayers, clearly. But we also have a fiscal responsibility to the school and to make sure that we're in good condition.
That's right.
Going forward. So, you know, making a decision on this year's budget, it's amazing that we can do it. All of that, but are we making a good decision for the years moving forward?
And so I think you, you, Catherine has, I think can give a better explanation of this than I can.
First off, all of you who have worked with me for years know that I, I usually do say we should go to the allowable tax levy. So this is a different spot for us to be in. It just, it works for us this year. And when you look back at the slide of what we are proposing this year, and as I explained how we create our rollover budget, a lot of that $132,000 is going to be recaptured right away when I reduce some of these one-time costs out of next year's rollover budget. For instance, pre-K implementation, most of the expenses are a one-time this year expense. You know, we won't put in a second playground, we won't have to buy a new curriculum and new furniture, we'll, we'll already have it.
Right. And the teacher is coming from ours.
It's coming from our existing staff. You know, we're not, you know, we, I'm not going to say softball dugout won't be spent someplace else. Air conditioning, hopefully we won't have too much more to do with our air conditioning. Auditorium upgrades, I would assume we'll put some budget money to it. I think it's one of the areas that hasn't been touched in our, in the capital plan. But it, we, the budget probably won't support $30,000 a year for it. So the transportation study is a one-off. We do anticipate a potential retirement. There could, there may be with the alignment from fifth grade to sixth, moving fifth grade to sixth grade, there could be an adjustment with class sizes there that we could, um. So it's just, it, there, it, I mean, granted, some of it is unknown, but there does seem to be enough in this year's budget that we could comfortably make up the money within our rollover budget next year.
Sometimes we avoid having these kinds of conversations because it can be uncomfortable.
But we are having it.
So more than anything else, I, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to let the process happen, which I think is valuable, not only for us, but also because it's given, you know, lots of members of the community the opportunity to weigh in and really think critically about what the difference is. This is what the values are that are in place when we're talking about going up to the cap or not. So I really appreciate that. I, we've had a couple of meetings this last week, one-on-one. And I appreciate you for taking the time to do that and walking through the budget again with us. And I, you know, I, I remain sort of, similarly, my, my mind is towards how it compounds over time. But I think particularly in this year, when we're looking at so many, there's so many things on the ballot this year that we're voting for and we're thinking about the library. Same time that it does make sense for me this year for us to, since none of these things seem essential to move forward with a 2.8, I, I, it makes sense to me. So I'll be the first to say.
Appreciate you, Sean. I, I also, obviously I came at it from a really important point and negotiating in public is always an interesting point in, you know, a board. And of course with further conversations as well, which I think were helpful. And I think Catherine has been excellent in laying things out. And at the last meeting also pointed out, um, that the SARS could align. And Maggie also pointed out a really good point, which is there are a lot of, you know, there are a lot of things that people are voting for this year. And if the, if, if this is the year which the SARS can align, um, I obviously have concerns, as I think many of us do, uh, going forward, right? Especially when you look at that, that tariff bus change. You know, we're going to get hit with that in the capital project, we're going to get hit with that.
That is actually, that is the worry, you know.
You know, and those are rip, right? The history of this is you'll pay more and you'll get less. So there's a real, there's, there is a very real concern. But, uh, you know, we're talking a half percent and, you know, Catherine has laid out some really, really important points. And I think the conversation was very helpful. I very much appreciated it. And, and so I can, I can definitely understand where the 2.8 could be met. I could.
Yeah, this is not to, thank you. Uh, and this is not to, this is not to disagree and people should correct me if they think I'm wrong. There is a lot of anxiety, I think, or some anxiety, I guess I would say, on my part about the capital project, right? And what the potential for tariffs have and the implications for that. Like I think that's something that we need to be, you know, just paying attention to.
Yeah, consistently communicating.
Yes, but I, I don't, I, I do think that what we have in the budget is less subject to, to those kinds of changes, right? And there's nothing that we know about right now. I mean, the tariffs have been signed, they're in place, they're happening, right? Like that's a real thing. When it comes to the budget, most of the things that we have in our budget are primarily, right? So a huge proportion of our budget for very good reason is it's the human capital in our budget, right? And so we have contracts and we're accounting for increases and retirement fund and insurance and things like that. The other items like that, there's nothing in there or it's already been accounted for. We think that the immediate economic concerns affect.
We, we budget for contingencies. So, um, I believe it was Michelle who brought up like, you know, electricity, you know, what could, what could happen with that? And we do budget higher than we, I don't want to say higher than we need because we do need to budget what we budget, but we budget enough that if there was a spike in electric, we would still be able to cover our utilities within our utilities as a whole.
Or heating oil or anything.
Right. Um, you know, obviously we could see increases with materials and supplies. But again, we do budget with some contingencies. Another one is health insurance. We have to budget as if more, you know, all employees take our health insurance because we have to be able to pay that bill if indeed that happens. So sometimes there is some additional money available in, um, the health insurance code that we could use for something else if we get to the end of the year and, and we needed it. And then the one thing I noticed, quickly go back to our fund balance. That's why we have these restricted funds too. For instance, if we really had a hard year and we said, okay, this, this has really, this has backfired and we could pay our retirement bills out of the fund balance as opposed to paying it out of the general fund. You know, if we had a big repair, we could take it out of the repair reserve. So we could also dip into the unassigned if we had it. So there's a lot of contingencies built in that protect us from that, that happening.
Right. Contingencies that are built in that represent good financial planning.
Correct. Correct. To ensure that we don't end up in the end.
Right, right.
I appreciate that.
Because school districts cannot overspend your budget.
School districts cannot overspend our budget, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, if there is a year to not go to the levy limit, you know, this would be a good one in terms of the, they haven't had, they haven't been big conversations, but we have talked about after the capital referendum passed. We have talked about, you know, easing up a little bit on the, on the community, right? Because our taxes are still going to go up 2.8% over the capital referendum as well. So, you know, and we have said before that maybe this is something we think about and we talk about, which we are. So maybe this is the year that we don't go all the way up to the limit. It's messaging, it's optics, it's, you know, being a little bit more, um, you know, thinking, thinking of the, of the taxpayers who get the majority of our revenues, so.
I think I made clear last week and I think my statements have made clear that I'm, I'm comfortable with a 2.8 increase. Michelle, I think you are the one person who hasn't weighed in.
I did.
You did. I'm sorry. I apologize. So I think that's what, that's what Catherine was really looking for, right? So it's been a difficult conversation. We're not, I think, and it definitely shows like in the years to come, the conversations that we'll want to make sure we're having, um, earlier and often about, um, this. And, uh, and so that we're doing this as responsibly and as openly and as transparently as we can. So which is, was certainly our goal this year as well. So.
There is always the whackingness that we have no idea what is actually the formula to figure out your tax levy. It's this weird cauldron thing and which makes sense.
One guy understands.
And then, and then you don't know what it is until when?
February.
February.
It's a tricky way, it's a tricky way to run such an important.
And, you know, we can run estimates and, you know, we do obviously look forward. And, you know, same thing with our budget, I do look forward to what, you know, we would need. You know, it's not a full financial, you know, financial plan looking three years out, but there is definitely things that we keep an eye on, um, trying to project what things will look like in the future. But after you go past a year or two, it becomes very uncertain, the accuracy, it becomes very uncertain.
Thank you again. You have anything you need from us?
Yes.
Wait, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is this our first public comment?
Yeah. All right.
They're usually a lot shorter.
That's right.
The Howling Board of Education.
Thank you.
The Howling Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. The first public comment session is reserved for comments on special presentations and active agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak to board would ask you to sign in and state your name. Give your remarks for three minutes and to avoid discussing personnel. Oh, you entered. Oh, yeah. So I didn't do my own spiel multiple times. So.
Okay, I didn't sign in. Um, so thank you, thank you Catherine for the presentation. Well, you know, thought out and whatnot. But I'm here to kind of express concern about not going up to the allowable tax levy. You're embarking on a major project, you're increasing the footprint of the organization of the campus. That's going to increase your operational maintenance costs accordingly per square foot. Uh, I think that the district, just looking at facilities, has done an awesome, awesome job of leveraging the talent of the custodial staff. You know, unfortunately Michael Saccato's retired, but, you know, Jack Altreid's electrician, everything else. So you've had staffing changes there that's going to necessitate that you engage with outside, you know, electrical firms as just one example. You have aging electronics, case in point, the auditorium. Got me busy this weekend because of the hail. So fortunately we're able to get it up and running. But as equipment ages, your maintenance is going to go up in the best way. And there's been study after study about this, um, in order to reduce your maintenance costs, you know, and increase availability of your equipment is to properly maintain it. Don't wait for that emergency and it's less expensive. I do get very concerned about, um, not raising that baseline because of the future needs and the future questions that we have regarding the economy. And the, the economic forecast is a big question mark and it's, it's a source of potential angst for a lot of people. I don't like paying taxes, but I think that you're better off taking a cautious approach because you have a school district to run. And you know what? Then the next year, if you don't need it, then do a 1% increase. But, you know, I've been coming to board meetings after board meetings for many years. And I think that the tax levy is almost a joke because it doesn't come close to really competing with inflation that's out there in the real world. So I feel like you're kind of two strokes forward and three strokes back. So strongly consider that. There are, um, another concern, and I'm almost up on my three minutes, but you have a major project, right? So think about your staffing requirements for that, you know? Do you need additional staff, additional maintenance staff to kind of take care of all the chaos? Those are things that you're, you're probably going to need. And maybe it's not the LED lighting, although I think the lighting generally in a lot of classrooms is like horrific. Sorry, I like lighting, but LED is so much better, brighter, um, better learning environment. But that's something that also is going to be affected by tax because Russ does not create a lot of LED fixtures. So that could be something that you buy this year and you implement, you know, you're with available staff for overtime. So that's it. I vote for, you know, just really strongly consider the future impact and that baseline that you're kind of giving away because you don't know what the allowable tax levy will be in future, you know, years. So that's it.
Going into the words.
All right.
Into the words.
Super quick, Carl, I didn't sign in either, but you know who I am. We did get our 17th preschool registered this morning. Unfortunately, I want to thank Stepping Stones for engaging with us through the RFP process, but they did have to withdraw their application. So since my update last week, unfortunately, maybe next year if the state really does some, or the federal government does something with the amount that they offer for pre-K enrollment.
Big difference.
It would make a, a huge difference for our community partners, but they reevaluated where they were at and what they were able to do and they did have to withdraw their proposal from. So we do have our 17th and we would be able to offer our 18th. I'm not worried about that last seat again, as we mentioned last, last week, that if we do have one spot, it means that if a family moves in, uh, you know, over the summer or in September, uh, I think likely we would have that filled at some point during the school year. But I did want to update the board since that was a change since my proposal last week, uh, my presentation last week. And I wanted to thank Stepping Stones probably for being willing to engage and, and to, um, to work with us. Hopefully we'll be able to engage with them next year.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on our agenda are the administrator information reports. We thank the administrators for those reports that. We're all very, so much going on. I don't know. Somehow I read three times today that the play is on the 20th and it didn't occur to me that it was this weekend until tonight and someone said that. Um, all right, we're going to move into the consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, uh, consent agenda financial, may I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
I just want to note on here that we have, um, on here, an acceptance of donation from the Cold Spring Lions Club for some outdoor, um, $1,000 toward materials to support the Lori Isler Outdoor Classroom. So, uh, thank you to them for that. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Okay, next on the agenda is consent agenda personnel. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
On here with this, we are actually officially appointing Dr. Duffy along with just a whole slew of much-needed substitutes and assistant coaches and coaches.
Newspaper.
Oh, and the newspaper. Yes, yes, yes. And the newspaper, which was mentioned earlier. So a lot of really exciting things on there. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, now moving into. Moving into new business, the CFT CPSC recommendation.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education as presented.
May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Uh, next, so we must have gotten the policy audit from Erie Bosse's. So what the public has available pool to it, I think, is the red line versions. Oh, I have a question. Do the different colors mean?
Thank you Lou versus.
Yeah, it means a little bit of something from Erie. Yes, I can, I can let you know specifically, in totality, it's the changes that they're recommending.
Right.
But yes.
Like I just couldn't figure out.
Yeah, you're right. They, there is a code that we had received. I'll send it to you.
Yeah, I'd just be curious.
It's funny because I.
I'll add it to this.
Who's the one writing?
That's right.
Who's the one writing?
I was trying to find thieves.
That's right.
Yeah.
Between the.
These things that have been shit.
Are we appeasing with this one?
But thanks to the policy committee for the work on that. And, um, I think if we have anything else, we want to, pretty straightforward.
It is, yeah. Thank you.
So we'll put it on next time for the adoption.
So, all right, so now we're moving into, just so folks know, a whole series of required, um, resolutions that we need to approve. Megan won't read the whole thing, but she has to read some of it for, all of them. And they are all a roll call vote. So just be prepared for that. So, um, uh, may we have the recommended action for the resolution calling for the inclusion of proposition two in the notice of the annual district meeting?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the super interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the resolution to include proposition two in the notice of the annual district meeting on May 20, 2025 as written.
So, oh, motion. May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Nope.
No. Oh, we have to go.
Yeah, I have to do, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, he's sleeping.
Vice President Valentine. Yeah. Trustee Clementson.
Yes.
Trustee Cooper.
Yes.
Trustee McNell.
Yes. About that. Okay.
All right.
All right. So now the resolution calling for the inclusion of proposition three, the recommended action please.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the resolution to include proposition three, which is the Capital Reserved Fund amendments in the notice of the annual district meeting on May 20, 2025 as written.
May I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, President Clements.
Yes.
Vice President Valentine. Trustee Clementson.
Yes.
Trustee Cooper.
Yeah.
Trustee McNell.
Yes.
Uh, so now the resolution calling for the inclusion of proposition four.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the resolution to include proposition three, which is for the Butterfield Library, in the notice of the annual district meeting on May 20, 2025 as written.
You meant four. It says three here, but it's four.
Oh, correct. Four. Yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, may I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, President Clements.
Yes.
Vice President Valentine.
Yes.
Trustee Clemmison.
Yes.
Trustee Copper.
Yes.
Trustee McNell.
Next is the resolution calling for the annual district meeting and trustee elections on May twentieth.
This is the resolution calling for the annual district meeting vote on propositions and trustee elections on May twenty, twenty, twenty-five as written.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
President Clements.
Yes.
Vice President Valentine.
Yes.
Trustee Clemmison.
Aye.
Trustee Copper.
Yes.
Trustee McNell.
Um, all right, so now we're actually moving away from the vote and the proposition. And this is the resolution authorizing basically the expenditure, um, of the, of the Capital Reserve Fund. But Megan, I'll let you.
For the capital project, yes.
For the capital project.
Approval of bond resolution authorizing the construction of improvements and additions to and reconstruction of school district buildings and facilities at a, at a maximum estimated cost of twenty-eight million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars in and for the Howden Central School District at Phillips Town, Putnam and Duchess Counties, New York, and authorizing the expenditure of one million dollars of Capital Reserve Fund monies and the issuance of twenty-eight million dollar, twenty-eight million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars serial bonds of said school district to pay the cost thereof as written.
Um, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
President Clements.
Yes.
Vice President Valentine. Trustee Clemmison.
Yes.
Trustee Copper.
Yeah.
Trustee McNell.
All right. Um, communication to the public, second opportunity. Right, board reflection.
Uh, a lot of, uh, you did, uh, wonderful work sharing your gratitude for the process of, of letting earn a superintendent. But I, we would be remiss if we didn't celebrate and give you nothing but gratitude for all of your hard work throughout this process. Big work, a wonderful, wonderful leader. And, um, the district and the community is so very lucky to have you in this position at this time. So thank you very much.
That means a lot to me. It really does. Thank you very much.
That was big work. Thank you very much.
Um. It's, I'm fortunate to be able to give back to my community in this way. I really do feel that, but I think, also thank you.
I, uh, I wanted to point out that, uh, we, uh, St. Patrick's Day was yesterday. And, um, Gail is a, uh, accomplished Irish step dancer, I believe.
Yes.
And so, and so the, to go on record, the expectation, of course, would be next year, St. Patrick's Day. Yeah, there we go. How's that work? Will it be on a board? Will it be on a Tuesday? Educational moment, Sean.
I think if Damian were here, I would say I really, really appreciated his comments. I would have, um, uh, he shares a sentiment that I think, you know, that definitely is prevalent in the community. I think it's prevalent among board members. The one thing to anybody who's still watching this meeting this far into is, you know, one of the things I've learned from Catherine and Carl this year is there are so, there are so many fears, right? I mean, as somebody who's like, whole life has been devoted to federally funded public, uh, education research and has seen that entire industry be decimated in the past couple of months, including the jobs of dozens of people that I know and thousands of people who had jobs like the jobs I had, I certainly understand. I really understand that fear and the concern. Um, and yet, one of the things I've learned from Catherine and Carl is that we, our, our responsibility is to budget for what we are faced with right now. So there are very good chances that as this building is built, we will see the need to hire more maintenance people. As we develop what I anticipate, what I know we all hope will be a stellar and exciting, um, uh, steam program, there may be opportunities for, for us to hire now. I know that there are still going to remain to be differences of opinion. I know we all have questions or have had questions. But I did, um, that has, has been something that I've learned through this particular budget season. Um, and so I do understand, uh, he wasn't just speaking about fear, he was also just talking about like future prospects, some things that are exciting. But really, what we're, what we do in this process is, is, is budget for next year. Um, but I think one of the things that I think probably we want to collectively be thinking about is, is some of these long-term goals as well as we move forward with our new superintendent. We certainly have our work cut out for us. Thank you. All right.
Just congratulations to Dr. Duffy.
Yes.
I look forward to transitioning with you, which starts tomorrow morning at eight AM. See you bright and early.
You better bring your donuts.
All right, um, I move to adjourn the meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?